All right, ma'am chair, floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for February 6, 2024 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen, and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six, uh, sorry, star six to unmute yourself after you received a request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand, assumed as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. All right, Mr. Stenbridge. You're unmuted.
Fortunately, not anymore. Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Ms. Better Brazza.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Ms. Logue.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. The floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will start off today with the approval of hearing minutes scheduled for 9:30. These minutes are from October 17, October 26, October 31, November 9, November 14, November 28, and December 5.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the hearing minutes.
May I have a second?
Second, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we'll move on to the extension scheduled for 9:30 a.m. First, we have case BOA 1279801 with the address of 120 Braintree Street. The board originally granted this relief on March 11, 2022, and this relief remained valid until March 11 of this year. This is the applicant's first request for an extension until March 11, 2025. If Attorney Small and/or another representative is present, will they explain for it?
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small. I have a business address on 51 Dobson Road. We're here today seeking a one-year extension of the relief granted by this board for our project at 120 Braintree Street, which included 32 residential units, 31 parking spaces, and retail space. We're just in the process of securing and finalizing our funding, and we just ask for a little bit more time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I make a motion for an extension until March 11, 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA 1228936 with the address of 7 to 11 Curtis Street. The board originally granted this relief on February 11 of 2022, and this relief remained valid until February 11 of 2024. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension until February 11, 2025. If Attorney Drago and/or another representative is present, will they explain for it?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Stenbridge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of my client, Rise Construction, we are seeking a one-year extension, and basically that is for financing purposes. There, it took a little bit longer to get financing for the project, and then also there were some design changes when they went through the design review process that they're still working on, but plans should be filed in the next, you know, six months, so we are seeking the extension.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I make a motion for an extension until February 11, 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, we have case BOA 1253082 with the address of 21 Wallwerth Street. The board originally granted this relief on January 28, 2022, and this relief remained valid until January 28 of this year, which has expired. The applicant filed a timely request for this first one-year extension until January 28 of 2025. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain for it?
Hello, good morning. My name is Sisnael Bias. I'm a representative and daughter of Anna Bias at 21 Wallwerth Street. I would like to request an extension to design board. This project is under BPDA design and review, and it's also under court review. We are asking for an extension just to do design review and also litigation purposes.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Motion to grant an extension until January 28, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1050294 with the address of 382 Sumner Street. The board originally granted this relief on February 17 of 2021, and the first extension was granted until February 17 of this year. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension until February 17, 2025. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board, please?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Leandro Ladue, and I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, Dorina Mado, who is present and sitting next to me at the moment. We're just requesting an additional one-year extension till February 2025 if possible. The reason for this is that we were unable to find her suitable housing due to lack of inventory and high interest rates, but we are currently in the process and moving forward. So with that, we'd like to request an additional extension for one year.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I make a motion. Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
A motion to grant the extension to February 17, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, members.
Next, we have case BOA 1085883 with the address of 197 Chelsea Street. The board originally granted this relief on February 26 of 2021, and the first extension was granted until February 26 of this year. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension until February 26 of 2025. If Attorney Lynn or another representative for the applicant is present, will they explain for it?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, and good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linds with the business address of 245 Sumner Street, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, as the secretary indicated, this is our second request for an extension. This project involves the rehabilitation of existing mixed-use building with a vertical addition. I believe we're just about completed with our design review. There are some structural matters that we do need to address, and it has taken a little bit more time, so we're requesting just a little bit more time to get that completed.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to grant the extension to February 26, 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 979536 with the address of 346 to 348 West Broadway. The board originally granted this relief on November 1 of 2019. The tolling, the relief remained valid until February 6 of 2023, and the first extension was granted until February 6 of this year. This is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension until February 6, 2025. If Attorney Maranci and/or another representative is present for the applicant, will they explain to the board, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Langham. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is a request for a second and final extension. I checked with the project architect on the status of this project in early January. I was advised that BPDA design review is complete, architectural and structural permit drawings are 95% complete, and mechanical, electronical plumbing, electrical and plumbing plants are complete. All it had been missing was a Boston Water and Sewer stamped civil plant, so it's very, very close to permit issuance, but we do need one final extension.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I make a motion for an extension until February 6, 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next on the list is case BOA 798863 with the address of 11 Inwood Street. The board originally granted this relief on November 16 of 2018. The tolling, the relief remained valid until September 20 of 2022, which expired. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension. Would, so would the applicant and/or their representative please explain to the board why this is necessary?
Morning. My name is Mia. I'm one of the owner of the 11 Inwood Street. Sign up to me, my cousin Hi-Town. The reason I'm asking for extension is that after we got this done during the COVID and with the crisis and what happened in our life, we couldn't think about the building or the money or anything else. My husband has cancer and have to be treated and get COVID. My brother-in-law has stroke and be in the nursing home. So many people die, and it, we, our minds are the, on the public. So therefore, when we just woke up and stabilized and we, and we found out that it's already expired, therefore today, we both sitting here and asking the board for an extension so we could do, we can do what we intend to do and we would like to do.
Okay, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to grant the extension to February 6, 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, ma'am.
Thank you so much for helping us. Thank you. You all have a great day. Thank you.
The final request for an extension today is case BOA 388758 with the address of 1102 to 1106 Blue Hill Avenue. The board originally granted this relief on January 13 of 20, January 23 of 2015. This relief remained valid until January 23, 2017, which expired. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension. The extension has expired, and, oh, sorry, and basically with the, they're looking to have the extension granted until February 6 of 2025. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board, please?
Hi, if you're on, can you raise your hand for this proposal? 1102 Blue Hill. I don't see any raised hands.
Javier, defer, defer or we will?
Madam Chair, recommend a deferral to the next hearing date for February 27.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Can I make a mo-
Oh, I think, I think Mr. Langham froze. Can I have a motion?
Then we'll make a motion to defer this case until February 27?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Okay.
Next, we'll move on to the groundwater after conservation overlay district only. Hearing scheduled for 9:30 a.m. We have case BOA 1539319 with the address of 76 Webster Street. It's the applicant's for this and the, and or their representative is present, will they explain to the board, please?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Stenbridge, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linds with the business address of 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, a very straightforward proposal. This involves a renovation of an existing three-bedroom dwelling because the extent of the renovations are valued at more than 50% of the value of the building, and this is located in the G-Cod district. G-Cod is applicable. It requires G-Cod approval only. I believe we've submitted the appropriate letters from Water and Sewer and regarding no harm.
Okay. Is Mr. Semenelli on?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to building code hearing scheduled for 9:30. We have case BOA 1552781 with the address of 167 Maverick Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board, please?
Yes, Doug Hendrick, MC3 Boston, representing City Real Estate Development for this building code appeal.
Please proceed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, please proceed.
Thank you. Okay, okay, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is a new construction building at 167 Maverick Street. The top floor is two units, each of which will have a private roof deck. There are some newer plans than, if we go, yeah, there we go. If I may share my screen, I have some revised plans. Is that okay?
You're not able to share your screen, so we have what you've submitted, so you should go by them. Thank you.
Okay, fair enough. So the first citation is we're proposing to access the roof decks via a hatch in lieu of a headhouse, as is required by the building code. This is the conflict that exists between the zoning code and the building code. We know in the past that this board much prefers the roof hatch approach versus headhouse. The zoning code was changed to include headhouse in the building height under the zoning code, so we are reducing the building height by providing these two roof hatches. They serve only the individual dwelling units. They are not common roof decks. So we ask for the building code relief to access the, the two roof decks using the hatch.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
No questions.
Okay. Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval to provide building code relief to allow for access to the roof hatch.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Logue.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. We also have a second building code issue that was raised by Inspection Services. We believe it is an incorrect citation in that all of the rooftop condensing units are obviously on the roof, and to access these rooftop units, we need to go through one of the two dwelling units on the top floor. This is not expressly prohibited by the building code. The dwelling unit is to, the definition of dwelling unit is to provide independent living facilities, including family provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. An HVC condenser has nothing to do with any of those requirements. This is a very common approach to put all the rooftop condenser units on the roof and access them through one or more units to get to it for maintenance and so on and so forth. So there's, there's no other way to do it. So we've asked the board to uphold our interpretation and indicate that it is not a building code violation, and it is also not a violation of the mechanical code because all it says is interior means of access shall be provided.
Madam Chair, I apologize. For the moment, that, that is not for the board for that issue, and the case has just been approved. If he has any other questions, he can contact the zoning board of appeals office.
Thank you. That would be helpful. So, Mr. Anderson, please, please follow up with the office.
Okay, so for what? Was it deferred, or was it refused, or what's, what's the issue?
What he just brought forward was not part of the relief you sought, as, as our attorney just stated, and so we just, we have already approved the building code relief for the hatch, so please contact the ISD office for the issue you just started discussing. Thank you.
Okay.
Next case?
Next, we move on to the hearing scheduled for 9:30 a.m. We have, we have case-
Any requests for it at the office?
Before we go there, do we have any requests for the throw or withdrawal from the 9:30 a.m. timeframe?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, Attorney Linds, first up to bat, 89 Condor Street.
Okay, so that is going to be for case BOA 1550055 with the address of 89 Condor Street. Would you go ahead and explain, Madam Chair, in a word?
Sure, thank you. Mr. Stenbridge, again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linds on behalf of the petitioner for 89 Condor Street. Madam Chair, as the board is aware, the BPDA has recently adopted recommendations for new zoning, including an amendment to Article 53 Applicable Release, Boston. This project was filed prior to the adoption of the recommendation. We'd like an opportunity to review the final draft that goes- We'd like an opportunity to review the final draft that goes before the zoning commission and determine whether or not there are compliance items that we can comply with under the new amendment. So we're requesting a deferral until such time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion? Oh, sorry, date, please?
If it's okay with Attorney Linds, if March 26 would work as a potential date, it could go later if you'd like.
March 26 should work, as I believe the zoning commission is scheduled to meet in early March, based upon my conversations.
Okay. So March 26, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to-
So defer to March 26?
A second.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwao?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Any further requests for withdrawals or withdrawals from 9:30? Hearing none. Then we'll move on to case BOA 1530534 with the address of 41 Wordsworth Street. It's the applicant and/or their representative present, will they explain to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. And on behalf of my client, Sharon Menninger, and Joanna Rec, who's the architect on the project. This is a very straightforward proposal. My client purchased a three-unit building. This is the older view of the exterior of the building. It was under renovation and becoming condos. My client is looking to simply add a roof deck to the top, exclusive to the third floor, and then to rebuild the porches and the rear, there's three rear porches with egress stairs just to make the building safer. The building is already fully sprinkled as well. The units are all two-bedroom, those are already existing. These are some good views of the top of the building. This, as I had mentioned, this would be an exclusive roof deck to the third floor unit. It would only be accessed via hatch, so no headhouse in the building. And we specifically pulled the building, based on the new plan, East Boston, 14 feet from the front of the building or from the front of the sidewalk. So to put it more in the center of the building as well. And the railing heights are three feet six inches. And that is the whole proposal, we can answer any question. We recited for a roof structure restriction and side yard, which was pre-existing roof structure because the structure is on top of the building.
Thank you, Mr. Drago. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a-
Madam Chair, if you can just read the BPDA recommendation.
It just says denial without prejudice.
Okay, thank you.
So just on that, Ms. Bedebraza, I actually spoke to Mr. Hampton this morning. I think there was some confusion, and I think him and I, I'll let him speak as well, I know he's on. But there was some misinformation in the recommendation. This, it talked about 2F district. This is now under the new plan, an EB3, EBI3, although this building is already existing. It also mentioned that under the new plan, roof deck should be pulled back in the front. And I'm not sure if the examiner saw, but we did specifically pull back the roof deck to comply with.
I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Thanks.
May I have a public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Malavia Gomez with the Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted an abutters meeting on October 11, 2023 for this project. One abutter was present on the call, and they simply asked questions about the setback of the roof due to privacy concerns. The applicant met with the Harborview Neighborhood Association, and the group voted 23 in favor with no opposition on December 4, 2023. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion, given that it had 23 in favor of the project. I'm going to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwao?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1528615 with the address of 158 Appleton Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board, please?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott, Quilty, Miller, and Hanley. 28 State Street in Boston. With me today is Anat Beck Naktagol from Derek Rubenoff Architects. We're here on behalf of Bridget Mott and Alex Fornat, who are both on as well. They are a young couple who bought one of the two condo units at 158 Appleton Street between B and C Streets in South Boston in June of 2021. Recently had a baby girl in December of 2022, and they are, you know, a new and growing family looking to continue putting down roots in the neighborhood, in the South Boston neighborhood. And similar to the previous project just before this one, they're looking to add some open space as a result, which is the reasoning behind their proposed roof deck, which is exclusive to their unit. And this is a great slide, I can quickly run through the summary. Again, it's an existing two-family condo building. They're seeking permission to construct a new roof deck private to their unit. It's a smaller roof deck, it's approximately 208 square feet. There is also importantly, an existing permitted roof deck for the other unit in the condo building, which this one intends to match in size and style, et cetera. Access to the roof deck would be via an existing previously permitted headhouse that's up there now. So there's already access to the roof. And what they're looking to do again is to, you know, provide some new and usable open space for their growing family, which is, you know, obviously very important in the city of Boston. And the roof deck would be consistent with numerous other, you know, roof decks that are on similar residential buildings along Appleton Street on this block between B and C Streets, including again, the one that's on their own roof. And I think the last thing I would just mention on this slide importantly is that the roof deck is at the rear of the building, which you'll see, and it's not visible from the street. So there would be no impact from a visual standpoint from Appleton Street. Next slide, please. This is just a refusal letter. We need three citations of relief. We're in the restricted roof structure zone in South Boston, so we need allowances for the new roof deck access. Again, this is via an existing headhouse, not via hatch, which is what Section 29 would require, but again, it's an existing headhouse. The max allowed height on the parcel is exceeded due to the addition of railings and things of that nature, but again, not exceeding the existing headhouse, and it's similar to what's there now for the other unit, and it's not visible from the public way. And the final site that we need is relief for insufficient rear yard setback. The roof deck hinges upon the rear yard setback, but obviously not over the existing building that's there now and existing non-conformity. So the roof deck would be within the envelope of the footprint of the building. Next slide, I think is, just very quickly pass it over to Anat, just so she can show you the plan. You know, this is again, a pretty simple exercise on the roof deck. But Anat, do you want to quickly just talk through anything?
Yeah, sure, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Just to show you that the front of the building is already existing roof deck and headhouse for the unit two, and then the same, the headhouse is already existing for unit one in the back. And we just, if you scroll down, we should show you the plans. Please continue. Yeah, just right there. So in green, we're showing the much-needed open space for the, for unit one in the back. We're set in three feet on the side and as much as possible from the rear. But as we see, there's not a lot of space to cut. So this is great, we're just providing much-needed open space. And right now, you have a headhouse that goes to nowhere, and it's unsafe. So we're actually providing 42-inch-high railing to provide more safety and privacy in the roof deck. And it's, the roof deck is about 14'6 by 12'6, so it's not very big. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony? Ms. Pulaski?
Well, Madam Chair, good morning. Lydia Pulaski with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting, 158 Appleton Street, was hosted on November 29, 2023. The proponent presented plans, abutters voiced support for the proposal during the meeting. The St. Vincent's Lower End Neighborhood Association will not oppose this proposal. At this time, our office is unaware of any concerns with this application. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura? Laura, are you getting a little bit of a problem?
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Laura Tullidano from Council of Flynn's office. Council of Flynn would like to go a record in opposition based on his longstanding policy against roof deck proposals. And due to the negative impacts to the quality of life for neighbors in South Boston for years, including our seniors, persons with disabilities, and young families. For many years, people out of Boston have endured quality of life issues in the form of late-night parties on roof decks at all hours, along with trash removal issues. These issues were subsequently exacerbated during the pandemic, and Council of Flynn continues to spend many nights in the summer with Boston police breaking out loud parties coming from roof decks. The approval of additional roof decks to this existing quality of life in South Boston does not address or have an impact on our affordable housing crisis. Council also continues to oppose roof deck projects for these reasons and others. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Going to mail, I sent a request to unmute you. Are you here to give testimony on this proposal?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, can you tell us your name and address, and I'd be pleased to let us know if you're in support or opposition?
My name is Neil Gulven. I live in the same building as Alex and Bridget. I am in Folsport Port. They are incredible neighbors. They moved in a couple of years ago. You literally don't hear a peep out of them. Incredibly respectful, the entire street loves them. And there's just no reason why, they don't, they shouldn't get approval for this. I have a roof deck in my unit on the other side of the building. Their roof deck would be completely private to mine. They're incredibly quiet, respectful family. They need more outdoor space for their growing family. Considering I am a, not, not just a director of butter, I live in the building. I hope that my support would allow them to get what they need for their family. The last person who spoke mentioned partying, that's the last thing you have to worry about with them. They're not going to do anything like that on the roof deck.
Thank you, Mr. Gulven.
Madam Chair, I have no additional reasons.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwao?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much, everybody, we appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, we have case BOA 1548018 with the address of 27 to 29 Farragut Road. This is also an Article 80 case. It's the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent 27 Farragut Road Realty Trust and its principals, Christopher Anderson and Kurt Stenhouse, who propose to demolish the existing single-story mixed-use structure occupying this site, which is just over 9,400 square feet, and to construct a four-story residential building with 21 dwelling units, including four IDP units for 19% affordability, with 21 off-street garage parking spaces. This is, as Mr. Stenbridge noted, an Article 80 small project, which was approved by the BPDA in October 2023. In a moment, I'll turn the presentation over to Alex Yun of Monte French Design Studio, the project architects. Also joining us today is Raoul Deverge, the project's development manager from Rise Construction. I'll first speak briefly to the project zoning. The site is located within an MFR multi-family residential zoning sub-district under South Boston's Article 68 Neighborhood Zoning Article. The proposed multi-family use is allowed with variances that are required for the following dimensional issues. Minimum lot size for the proposed number of dwelling units, as Article 68 requires 22,000 square feet for 21 units. The maximum floor area ratio here is 2.0, while 2.56 is being proposed. Building's proposed height of four stories and approximately 46 and a half feet, while consistent with nearby buildings, nonetheless requires variance from the 40 feet generally allowed by code. But there are, as I'm sure the board has noted, two references to a height violation on the zoning refusal letter. This is because Article 68 also sets the height of any existing building as the maximum height on that lot upon its demolition. 200 square feet of usable open space per dwelling unit is required, whereas approximately 115 square feet are to be provided mainly within set decks and balconies. It should be noted, however, that the site is directly across the street from Marine Park, as well as Carson Beach and Castle Island, within a couple of minutes walking distance. Relief is required for side yard setbacks, although the right-side lot line is actually a street line on East Second Street, and therefore, under the code, a front yard setback applies there. A front yard setback violation is cited on the refusal letter, although it should be noted that for an Article 80 small or large project, front yard setback is actually determined by the BPDA during project review per application of footnote one of Table D of Article 68. Thus, there is no front yard setback violation, as that dimension was set by the BPDA during Article 80 review. Insufficient parking is cited, as well as the design of the off-street parking, since the building will utilize an automated stacker system to provide a one-to-one parking ratio. This amount of proposed parking has been judged as adequate by the BPDA and city transportation planners. Finally, there is the traffic visibility across corner violation, which is frequently cited. I point out that the building will be set back four feet on both the Farragut Road and the East Second Street sides of the site, and the project will be installing a six-foot curb extension at this corner to improve the pedestrian experience and to provide fully adequate visibility for both drivers and pedestrians. I'll now turn the presentation over to Alex Yun for a brief description of the building program.
Thank you, George. Good morning, chair members of the board. I'd like to start off with this image here. I think we, this is the design that we have finalized with input through the Article 80 process with the BPDA staff, the community. I'd like to note that this project has gone through a couple of redesigns. First, in prefile, there was a reduction in the overall scale and massing, as well as a complete redesign of the exterior to where we are today, with the presented here, as well as a number of changes to the fenestration materials through input with the community board, the community process under Article 80. I'd like to start noting some of the context here. Over on the left is our abutter 35 Farragut, which is a zero-lot line of butter. It is five stories tall with setback fifth floor. And over on the right is our abutter on East Second Street, 933 East Second, which is a four-story multi-family residential. We've taken great- We've taken great care and worked with the BPDA to really align the street wall elevations of both street fronts of the property to make sure, ensure that there is continuity and consistency along these two streets. We have taken, as George mentioned, about four feet at grade to widen the sidewalk and available walkability of Farragut and East Second Street, as well as increase and provide a curb extension on East Second Street at the BPDA's request to provide increased walkability and safety at the intersection, as many of the community walk down East Second to cross over Farragut onto the adjacent park. I'd like to note, while we're on this, we have a number of materials that were chosen in coordination with the BPDA and community. We have cementitious clapboard siding, some accent paneling across the window spandling and transoms. And we also have brick at grade with stone water tables and large glazing at that street corner to really activate that corner at grade with residential amenity program. Next slide. We can go down actually two more, sorry, three more slides to the site plan. Yes, right there. Just zoom back up, yes. And just to go over those streetscape improvements again, on the north of the page, there's that curb extension requested by the BPDA. We're proposing to keep the existing street tree on nine thirty-three East Second. We have worked with BTD to provide the curb cut access to the parking garage on East Second Street, which is the secondary street of the street corner. And then we are also proposing a couple of new street trees on Farragut Road with those etched regions on the right of the page. And as you can see, some of the elements here, we have taken care again to match the existing modal front yard setbacks, especially on Farragut Road, with our Butter Thirty-Five Farragut, as well as increasing the setbacks beyond the modal setback of our neighbor at nine thirty-three East Second. Next page. So you can see, on the first floor, we are proposing twenty-one stacker spaces in our enclosed parking garage. And on the street corner on the top right, we are activating that corner with residential amenity with large glass openings. The main entry on East Farragut Road, sorry, on Farragut Road and prioritizing a lot of the amenity program on Farragut Road. Next slide. This is a typical unit floor plan. This is the second floor. And so we are providing more deck and roof deck on this particular floor because of the garage below on the left. But this is a typical unit floor plan with seven units per floor, over three floors of residential. And you can see, most of these units do have reduced decks, as requested by the BPDA and by the community. They're inset for the most part, especially the ones that are facing the street to provide more privacy. Next slide. This is the upper unit floor. It's the same floor plan, except without the above-garage roof decks on the left. Next slide. I'm sorry, next slide. Let's go to the roof. We are proposing nothing on the roof except for rooftop equipment and solar-ready zone. That was a request by the community and BPDA that we reduce and remove any common roof deck at the main roof. Next slide. And so just to go over the materials again, we are proposing a mixture of very familiar and vernacular components, cementitious clapboard siding, accent paneling, wood look siding, as well as brick at grade that we have made in determination with the BPDA and to be resolved further during the BPDA design review.
Can I ask you to kind of wrap this up so we can get to questions as well?
Yes, sorry, I think that is, these are just illustrative innovations that I've already done over during, with the rendering.
Thank you.
That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, can I see if the board has any questions?
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions. Well, Mr. D'Amico of BTD did submit some comments. I don't know if he's available to speak to those.
You can feel free to read them into the record if you would like.
Okay. The plans, this comments, the plans show twenty-five spaces when the request was for twenty-one spaces. BTD would like to request an updated plan to reflect the actual number of spaces, twenty-one.
So. Do you want to address that, Mr.? Anything else, Mr. Stenbridge?
No, 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 that's it.
Okay. Do you want to address that, Mr. Marancy, before we proceed?
I will, I will, Madam Chair. My belief is that this may have been a previous plan set, being reviewed by Mr. D'Amico, because this had previously been a five-story building. The proposal is twenty-one spaces for twenty-one units.
Thank you.
On the plans, I'm reading actually twenty-two spaces plus an additional, plus a handicap spot. Can the architect?
Monte, yes, sorry.
There's eleven actual stackables, which equals twenty-two plus a single handicap space.
From Monte French, I think Alex, if you could look at that, I don't know whether it has to do with the lift pit, but hopefully you can comment, Alex, and provide some clarity.
I think two of the parking spaces are not stackable.
I'm sorry, Mr. Valencia, two of the spaces have what?
Yes, I think two of the parking spaces are not double. So they are several double spaces. The handicap is not double. And the one on the top, I mean, previous slide, is not double, it's single.
Yeah, there always needs to be at least one empty sled. I know that. So that may explain the apparent discrepancy.
Yeah, if the architect can just confirm the amount of spaces.
It is twenty-one. There are double stackers all along the left side, as well as the two spaces on the bottom on the right side. There is the ADA accessible space that is a single space in the middle of the parking garage. And over on the top right, those are two single spaces. And so that should equal twenty-one spaces total.
Including the handicap, right, in the total?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Enough of the questions.
Okay, any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, Lydia Pulaski with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Twenty-seven to twenty-nine Farragut Road, this is a BPDA project and went through the community process. We have received no letters of support or opposition. While we are unaware of the concerns at this time, we would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Stengen. Hi, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Laura Tullidano from Council, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Jessica. From Council of Flynn's office, Council of Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a thorough community process and good faith compromised with the neighbors, including ninety percent of the units being affordable and providing an opportunity for working families to remain in Boston. Moreover, the one-to-one parking ratio is mindful of the existing parking crisis in South Boston. Council of Flynn continues to support this proposal due to the work that was done to address neighbors' quality-of-life concerns, the parking ratio, and the affordable housing units for working families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana?
Yes, thank you. Hi, my name is Diana Amchak, and I'm a resident at thirty-seven Farragut Road, so two buildings neighbor from this proposed project. I did send a letter of opposition, so please make sure that's on record. So as a resident, I'd like to raise concerns with this proposal. While I support meeting affordable housing, the percentage can be maintained if there are fewer units. So I'm not suggesting we have a lower percentage of such units. But I want to call attention that that intersection or the corner is facing a very busy side of Farragut Road. So while it is facing a park, it is facing Evans Field, Evans Tennis Court, which has now turned into a pickleball court and the roller hockey arena. So this area is already flooded with people coming to use the park, roller hockey tournaments and such. There's already double parking on the street as is because of the popularity of the park. So insufficient parking is a concern, as is also pedestrian traffic. Extending the curb will only make it more difficult for parking and circulation, not to mention a really high increase in cars trying to park and navigate this area. So while the building is set back in alignment with others, this is a much larger unit, multifamily unit, than anything else that currently exists on Farragut Road. Most are under ten dwellings. So as a resident, I just want to raise concerns with that significant increase in this area.
Thank you. And we do have your email. Thank you.
Thanks, and I have no additional reasons.
Okay. Would the applicant like to circle back to that before we proceed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would simply point out that, again, we have a one-to-one parking ratio. It's always difficult to try to determine what is too much parking and too much traffic and not enough parking and competing for on-street parking spaces. But BPDA and city transportation planners did adjudicate this ratio is appropriate for the site. With respect to the corner buildouts, I truly believe that they're actually going to enhance public safety and enhance the pedestrian experience at that corner. And I don't think that they actually reduce on-street public parking, because one cannot legally park within that proximity to an intersection anyway. And also, the curb extension on the East Second Street side of the site, I believe, is actually replacing an existing curb cut. So there's an impossibility to park there under current conditions today, anyway.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Here in none may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion. I think this is a good project that is also providing about ninety percent of the units as affordable. And so I make a motion to approve the project.
May I have a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwol?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five three six three one zero with the address of eighteen Gardner Street. If the applicant or their representative present, would they explain to the board first?
Hi, good morning, members of the board. This is Evan Smith, representing eighteen Gardner Street. Thank you. Eighteen Gardner Street is in Fort Hill neighborhood of Roxbury. It is a property with two parcels, each of which originally had a two-family home on it. Currently, there is a two-family home at sixteen eighteen Gardner Street that is beyond repair. It has seven-foot-high ceilings, is collapsing in upon itself, has been deemed structurally unsafe by both the building inspector and structural engineer. And so I am proposing to replace that building with four units, while keeping the lot next door empty as open and green states. The building is going to be four, three-bedroom with an office, two-bathroom units, aimed towards families. That was a request that the neighborhood has had repeatedly. They're interested in more family-sized units. The lot is being maintained next door as open space as it was at one point, a yard sale lot, and the neighborhood would like to maintain that open space. Gardner Street is one of the steepest streets in Fort Hill. And therefore, when we started looking at how to get an ADA accessible unit in on the ground floor, it made sense to have a garden-level unit. And we can still have three levels above and still be the same height as the house next door. I believe that it fits in well with the surrounding typology. It should be styled similar to some of the Victorian and some of the contemporary dwellings that had been built in Highland Park recently. And so with that, we are looking for variances to build this building.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Yes, I have one small, I have a small question. Are these going to be condos or rental properties?
This is going to be condos. I, as a developer, have only done condos over the last fifteen years. I believe in homeownership, and so these will be condos, as everything else I have built has been condos.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, have a question. Can you tell us how wide the curb cut is from Gardner to accommodate those two stalls?
That is a good question. I believe it is, it's actually an existing curb cut, which is worth noting. I believe it's around sixteen to seventeen feet currently. It's wider than a standard curb cut, but it is currently existing on site.
Okay, and how will those two parking spaces be allocated to the units?
They will be likely, one will be allocated to the lower ADA unit, and then the other will have to be allocated to one of the upper units, most likely the second floor. Given that the views are really nice out the third and third-and-a-half floors, you know, that would make the most sense. There was, full disclosure, there was some feedback about putting four parking spots. I am open to that, though there was also pushback from others about turning the side yard into just a parking lot and maintaining some green space. So in theory, that could be a four-spot lot as well.
Okay, and there was some mention in the BPDA memo about an expired deed restriction. Is there anything you can tell us about that?
Yeah, so this had been a yard sale lot, the one to the north on this current plan. It's one of those lots that was deeded in the nineteen nineties and had been previously taken by tax foreclosure. The deed restriction has expired, and so that is technically now a buildable lot. Though, given the feedback from the community and the neighborhood group, I think it's probably smarter to not build on that lot, because they wanted to maintain the open space. So we're therefore quitting to develop on what was formerly the only developable lot, but doing the same number of units that historically have been on that site.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, if you can actually read the BPDA recommendation, that would be good.
BPDA recommends that now, without prejudice, the proponent should resubmit plans without an extension of the current curb cut, with proofs that development of the vacant parcel is allowed and with significant attention paid to better aligning the plans with the Highland Park standards and criteria. They may also consider a reduction in FAR, given the standards of the Architectural Conservation District. So I think you've addressed the curb cut, which you're not expanding, and you are also not developing on the vacant parcel, which has also been referenced. Does that?
Yes.
Match with?
That's correct. That memo was likely from twenty-twenty-one, when we put the original plans in, where we were showing a much wider curb cut and we were building on to the lot next door. So we've already did a yard sale on. So we're not building on to the yard sale lot, and we're not extending the curb cut.
Right, the curb cut is existing.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
May we have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office is going to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held a butters meeting on November 28th. There was a butter in attendance who vocalized support for this project, saying that they were happy to see what they thought was a blighted property being updated and felt that the proposal was in character with the rest of the neighborhood. I understand that the applicant also went on to present with the Highland Park Neighborhood Association, which reached out to us to say that they had not taken a final vote on this proposal and support our opposition. They had cited some concerns regarding the deed restriction that was mentioned earlier, as well as this being a historical district. And would like to see more information about the proposal and how it fits in with the character of the historic district. With that, defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
And Bob, you looking at your testimony here?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, all the BTD. From what I looked at, it seems like this front yard parking with regards to this plan. Is that true? I mean, it looks like this front yard parking, but I can't discern.
No, if there's, if the ends of the car are currently past the front line of the property line, that's an error. So the idea was that these would be in the side yard, you know, not going past the front line of the building.
I'm afraid that that's considered front yard parking. It's got nothing to do with the overhang. It's got to do with cars parking in the front yard, which BTD never approves. But I'll leave that up to the discretion of the board.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? I mean, sorry, public testimony?
Yeah, I do have an additional reason. Benjamin, go ahead. I sent a request on me.
Yes, hello. My name is Benjamin. I'm a resident of Boston, although over in Brighton. So I understand that I have potentially less standing than any of butter. But as a renter in the city, I feel that increased housing is probably the defining challenge at our time. And I've not heard a single critique of this plan that I think should get in the way of adding housing to what is currently a vacant lot. It already seems that onerous rules have reduced the size of this increase in housing from what was going to be a two-lot system to now only one lot. And so I do not believe that, I believe that this permit should be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. I do, yeah, Webster?
Yes, good morning, everyone. My name is Scott Webster. I live at 291 Roxbury Street, actually at the corner of 291 Roxbury Street and 1 Elmwood Street. I am in a butter for this project. Of this project, I have seen that building. It's been dis-repaired for quite a long time, and it would be great to have that happen. So I very much approve. And I've spoken to a number of my neighbors and solicited responses, and everyone that I have spoken to has supported. I've lived in this building for over 20 years, and so I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair? Confirmed, I have no additional reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant, can the applicant address the comment about just aligning with Highland Park standards?
Yes, so we will have likely multiple meetings with the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District. After we go through zoning, the way the process works in Highland Park is we go through zoning first, then we have a BPDA design review, and then last, after that's approved, we have the Highland Park ACV design review. I am completely in support of designing this in a way that the neighborhood and the ACV sees fit. I've already had conversations with the ACV on December 28th, advisory review, which some design details were suggested, and I'm definitely willing to work through that process with the ACV. I also just wanted to quickly address the parking issue. I will definitely work through with Boston Transportation to make sure that the parking, as it is ultimately designed, will not end up being classified as front yard parking. That is not the intent. We can move the parking further back as necessary.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion with two provizals.
A motion of approval?
Motion of approval with two proviso. One, that it undergoes BPDA site planning review so that you can accommodate the two parking spaces without being considered front yard parking and to ensure there is conservations of those trees, existing trees. And the second is to is to ensure that the project undergoes Highland Park Architectural Conservation District design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebrazo?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1545997 with the address of 472 to 474 Western Avenue. If Attorney Maranci is still present, and/or the parties represented?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent City Realty. Josh Betterman and Jacob Simmons are here today. We are also joined by Tanya Carrier of Calso Design, the project architects. My clients propose a five-story, 14-unit residential apartment building in a CC1 community commercial zoning sub-district at 474 Western Avenue in Brighton. The site is 3,759 square feet, and it is located entirely within the area of the BPDA's Western Avenue Corridor Study, which is a rezoning plan approved by the BPDA in October of 2022 and which will be submitted to the zoning commission as the area's new zoning. The billing is entirely consistent with the requirements and guidelines of the study area. My client will be offering three of the 14 units as IDP rental units with two at 70% AMI and one at 60% AMI. The three units constitute just over 21% affordability. This project will not provide off-street parking, which is consistent with the corridor studies and the BPDA's general recommendations on transportation planning and with the goals of the Comprehensive Go-Boston 2030 Plan, which aims to reduce overall car use and motor vehicle emissions citywide. Rather, there will be ample secure bicycle parking and storage on both the ground floor and in the basement of the building. And the building will include a cargo bike made available for the shopping needs of building residents. The present zoning is, as I say, CC1 community commercial, although the immediate area surrounding the site is mixed use with a significant residential premise, presence, excuse me. The site is located within Zone 1B under the approved Western Avenue Corridor Study, which allows for 65 feet of building height with a maximum FAR of 2.5 and an incentive FAR of 3 or 3.5 with maximum 60% lot coverage. It is further within the average Telford area under the study, which provides, again, for base FAR of 2.5 and a residential affordability bonus of up to 3.5. The proposed FAR of this project is approximately 2.8. And consistent with that number, my clients, as I say, will be providing three IDP units. The building height would be approximately 52 and 1/2 feet, less than the 65 feet allowed by the study, with less than 60% lot coverage, also consistent with the study parameters, as are the building setbacks, in particular, the front setback, which is a 10-foot setback from the lot line on Western Avenue to allow for some front landscaping and future widening of the sidewalk along Western Avenue. While the project is fully consistent with the Western Avenue Corridor Study, it is still regulated, of course, by present zoning. The issued zoning refusal letter cites the need for relief for the following provisions of the code. Excessive FAR in building height, as previously mentioned, as well as insufficient rear yard setback. Approximately 5 feet is supposed to be the rear yard setback versus 20 feet required by code. Mitigating this is the fact that immediately to the rear of the site is a residential driveway, which means that actual rear separation distance to the nearest residential structure in the rear will be about 30 feet. There's a cited violation for insufficient front yard setback, but this violation arose from an earlier version of the plans and has since been eliminated. Insufficient off-street parking is a violation, of course. There's also a cited violation for traffic visibility across the corner, which, with the increased front yard setback, has likely also been eliminated. But regardless, it is actually not impactful only to the facts that Kelly Court is a no-outlet public way with turning lanes to and from Western Avenue, providing entirely adequate sightlines. Finally, the proposed multifamily residential use is conditional, as proposed on the ground-floor level only, but not on the upper floors. I'll now turn it over to Tanya Carrier from Calso Design for a very brief presentation of the building program.
Good morning, Tanya Carrier, Calso Design. So we are proposing to, if you go to the next slide, increase each sidewalk. On Western Ave, we're proposing to increase the sidewalk width to nine feet and then have an additional landscape area in front of the building from there with a 10-foot setback from our actual property line. On Kelly Court, we are, the sidewalk's quite narrow. We are opposing to increase that as well to over 4'6", plus some additional landscape buffer, add an additional tree in the rear, some decorative pavers and landscaping and shrubbing all around the building. Within the building, we do have 14 units, consisting of five one-bedrooms averaging 620 square feet and nine studios averaging 490 square feet each. Three units per floor. On the top floor, two units in order to provide a set-down as you head down Kelly Court to reduce the massing on that side. And most of the units are provided with private balconies along Kelly Court or Western Ave, or private entries if they're on the ground floor. On our exterior, we did propose a mix of bays and balconies to break up the massing and a couple different materials. That's going to be the quick presentation, so I'll turn it back to George. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya, and I'm finished with my presentation. Madam Chair, we'd be happy to take any and all questions, comments from the board.
Just to clarify, there is no parking in this project. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, and so was there any consideration for that? I'm just looking at the area, and behind you are all these small houses and just a few small streets. Like, where are people?
Sure, the notion here, again, as rental units, the notion is that these would be perfect for persons who don't own motor vehicles and don't intend to own motor vehicles. There is ample bike storage on the ground floor and the basement. As I mentioned, there would be a shopping bicycle for building residents, and it is entirely consistent with the transportation goals of the Western Avenue Corridor Study. So again, it's trying to be responsive to the city's desire to create housing without bundling housing with the additional expense of parking, which many younger people are certainly moving away for, a trend that the city is trying to encourage.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to public testimony.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, also Brighton liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We did host a butters meeting for this project on January 24th in 2023. The butters, the attendees had concerns about setback, construction mitigation, particularly regarding parking, insufficient parking overall, traffic. The All Saints Association, to whom the applicant presented, wrote a letter of opposition, which the board should have received earlier this morning. The Brighton Allson Improvement Association was also presented too. Their zoning chair should be on to testify as to their stance. Our office did receive one letter of support from a resident of 219 Western Avenue. With that said, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Annabelle?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Allson Improvement Association. We voted to support this with the Western Ave Corridor Study in the hopes to build more housing. We did have concerns of the lot size and the no parking with it, but we are trying to support consistent building on Western Ave with the study. So we did vote to support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional reasons.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion? Madam Chair? Go ahead. Why don't you go, please?
Do you mind?
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion for approval with BPDA review.
May I have a second?
I'll second, and I'd just like to add, I think it's great this project doesn't have parking. I think it helps with affordability without tying that amenity to a unit. So I'm in support of that.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebrazo?
No.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
The chair also votes no, but the motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have a few minutes before closing.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break. Yes, sir. All right, Mr. Stenbridge. Sorry, I'm just doing my own call again, Mr. Stenbridge. Mr. Valencia?
Present.
Ms. Weewell?
Present.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Present.
Mr. Langham?
Present.
Loeb?
Present.
All right, so is yours, Mr. Stenbridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start out by asking for the 11 o'clock hearings. If there are any requests, we'll withdraw or dislodge from the soundtracks. Hearing none, then we will move on to case BOA 1554122 with the address of 519 East Second Street. From what I can see, this is Article 80 project. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board this?
Good morning. I hope you can hear me. My name is Michael Clark, representing 519 East Second Street LLC. Did that go through?
We can hear you.
We can hear you, and your slides are whatever you submitted to ISD, so that's what's scrolling.
Okay. I believe on or about February 10th of 2023, one of the minority owners of the property, Thomas Noto, applied to the BOA to reintroduce six private roof decks with headhouse access to this project on 519 East Second Street. And it appears that the BOA voted to approve this on or about April 11th with one headhouse. We then in turn submitted an application to ISD to amend the permit, and it was rejected. We submitted our application with two headhouses, thinking that that would be more appropriate, appropriately in compliance with the code. So ultimately, we're requesting permission to accept the application for six private roof decks that are accessible from two locations, and each location will have a stair and a headhouse at this location.
Okay, so just to confirm, the six roof decks were previously approved. The question is about the number of headhouses, or are the six roof decks also, are you also here? Because that's the question.
It's the access to the roof that has been a question. The roof decks has not been a concern voiced by anybody.
Okay, questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. I do remember this project.
I vaguely do too. Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, Lydia Plasky with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. 519 East Second Street was a BPDA project and went through the community process. During my tenure since October 2nd of 2023, our office has received no letters of support or opposition. ONS is unaware of any concerns at this time. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Laura Tolda for Calso Flight's office. Calso Flight would like to draw a record of support due to safety concerns on a second means of egress and building coissues. Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, I have no additional raise stands.
Okay, without may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval. This project was in front of us before when originally it was proposing to have like six headhouses, so it was just an issue of concern with the quantity of headhouses. I think two is very appropriate.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much for your assistance today.
Next, we got case BOA 1546075 with the address of 1853 Commonwealth Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. And on behalf of my client, Rita Kramer, and we also have Mark Sullivan from CHU to answer any questions over the plans. The building as it exists, you're looking at in this existing photo, we're proposing to change from its use, which has two residential units and six small offices throughout, to now have just six residential units, keeping the two existing and adding four, converting the office spaces with four side parking spaces on the right-hand side. This, the existing floor plan shows in the basement, there is an existing three-bedroom unit. We're proposing to keep that, so no change. The first floor has three small offices and an entry lounge area. This had historically been used as psychiatry offices, dental, some residential real estate, but they've been empty for a while, since even before the pandemic. Going up to the third floor existing, there is a two-bedroom, two-bath unit, and that comprises both the third and fourth floor. So there's two bedrooms in two bedrooms, so it's a four-bedroom unit pre-existing, so no change for that unit, and that encompasses the third and the fourth. So really, the changes would take place on the first and second floor. Those offices would be proposed to be converted to residential units. If we can go to, yeah, if we could stop right here for the site plan. Right now, this building has two existing curb cuts and really just lined spaces that don't meet any of the guidelines for BTD or BPDA. In the proposal, just to make it fit, we're proposing four spaces only on the right-hand side. There's an existing two-car garage in the back. We are keeping the structure, but the parking would be lined on the right. If you look at the left of this site plan, there's also an existing curb cut and all hot talk on the left side. We're proposing to keep a pathway for egress, but also to completely landscape that whole left area, infill the curb cut, and now add some green space to the existing site as well. We worked with the BAIA and Neighborhood on the conversion proposal, and I know in the BPDA recommendation, it also mentioned that this would fall under their Office Conversion Guidelines Pilot Program. It's more for the downtown, but it falls under those same guidelines. In and around this area is all multifamily residential, so across from us is all high-rise multifamily residential, five-story, four-to-five-story, some six. Next to us on either side are two six-unit structures as well. So this use would be more fitting and also creates residential housing at the same time as well. The violations that were mentioned, so additional lot area, we only have 893 square feet, so that would trigger a violation. Usable open space, 650 would be required, or a 264. And then parking, although this, we would be required to have 1.5 a residential unit, but with four spaces, we fall under the Alston Brighton Mobility Study guidelines as well. With that, I myself or Mark can answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have one for Bob D'Amico, if he's on, in regards to front yard parking, but the neighboring buildings looks like the topology is already there in terms of front yard parking. You know, given that now this is going to be converted to mostly residential. If he's on, it'd be great to get some of his feedback on that.
Yes, Ms. Brazza, Bob D'Amico, BTD. I think that space number one should be removed to eliminate the front yard parking issue. The other three, if this was commercial, it would be a little tough to approve, but since it's residential, it's something that we can go along with, but I recommend that space one be removed and three spaces be approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Drago, just on that topic, Mr. Drago, can you confirm, are those pre-existing spaces already?
Yes, so the whole, so if we pull back up to the very front photo of the building, this parking, yeah, if you go back.
I think so.
Either, this is fine, you can, yeah, you can see them, right here is fine. This is the left side with all of the parking just sort of mixed line. On the right side, you can see those spaces exist, not only are they on the front, but they're also angled parking as well, making it very, very tight for any space. So yes, it is pre-existing.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
I have a question, Madam Chair. Is the, I see, I think in the plans that two of the stalls are accounted for in the garage, making a total of six. Is that accurate, and is that garage usable?
It's really not. It's very, very dated. We didn't want to take the structure down, and it could almost be used as storage. They have very small spaces in there. I mean, I guess you could add an additional spot in the back if need be.
Okay, yeah, Mike was just more, what's the park, number of stalls on site? So it sounds like it's probably going to be four.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza, Alston Brighton Liaison, from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services here. We did host in a butters meeting for this project on October 25th, 2022. There were no butters that were present and were unaware of any other community concerns at this time. The applicant did present to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. Their zoning chair should be on to testify as to their stance. With that said, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have some raise stands here. Bob?
Yes.
He spoke already, so. Oh, he spoke, okay, sorry, your hand was still raised. Annabelle?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Have no additional raise stands. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Without may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that it undergoes BPDA site planning review to remove that front yard parking spaces and to find a way to accommodate a potential fourth parking space at the rear, and the other proviso is to provide permissible surfaces for the driveway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1552790 with the address of 226 to 228 Washington Street. If hearing Marazzi or someone else would represent us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marazzi. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in St. Paul, Boston. Madam Chair, members, I'm sorry, I was speaking, unfortunately, I was muted when Mr. Stenbridge was asking for withdrawals and deferrals, because I would like to seek a deferral in this matter. We became aware of the recommendation of the BPDA only yesterday when the recommendations were published online. While the recommendation for this is generally favorable in terms of the proposed use, the BPDA does have reservations about the parking layout, number of spaces, and the amount of usable open space. We would like to take some time and try to be as responsive to that recommendation as possible.
Thank you. Ms. Javier?
Yes, Madam Chair. Attorney Marazzi, would March 26th work, or would April 9th work better for you?
March 26th would be perfect, I think, Mr. Salas.
Okay, thank you. Without may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to March 26th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1547506 with the address of 224 to 232 Market Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would you sign to the board?
Patrick, are you on? Can you raise your hand?
Sorry about that. Attorney Kurt Blesser, representing Patrick Lee.
My business address is 300 Market Street, Brighton, Mass. Mr. Lee is also on with us. We are here before the board today requesting an extension of a non-conforming use at the establishment of, it's the Irish Village in Brighton. Mr. Lee and his family have owned it since 1971. They've had an opportunity to take over the space next door. If you're looking at the photo here, you'll see the space on the right side was a bakery, was there for years, but has been closed for approximately 10 years. Kind of a dilapidated storefront for the past too many years. Mr. Lee has rented that space out from the landlord and is proposing to put 30 additional seats in there and also has put in a handicap bathroom to go in there also. They've been in the neighborhood for, as I said, since 1971. It's a nice, quiet residential establishment, bar establishment that has been a staple in the neighborhood for many years.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza, Alston-Brighton liaison with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services here. Just here to testify that we haven't heard any community concerns regarding this proposal. The proponent did meet with the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. Their zoning chair should be on to testify as to their stance. That said, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board in this matter at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabella Gomes from the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support of this addition and also that they've really done a great job in cleaning up the outside of the building, so we'd like to be on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Minor Jerez, representing the carpenters union. We'd like to go on record in support. Mr. Patrick Lee has joined to be an outstanding member of the community and run his business very responsibly, including other places in the city of Cambridge and where it's full support of his proposal.
Thank you. Any other raise hands? So did we hear from Patrick? Bob? Patrick is probably the applicant. Okay.
Patrick is the applicant, yes.
Okay. No additional raise hands. Okay, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion, Bob.
Now, a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1413004 with the address of 562 Washington Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Tiscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Just a note, the description of this project has changed. So the new project proposed is to raise the existing structure and to erect seven-unit condominium building with seven parking spaces. The prior description was 14 units and nine parking spaces. So just to go over, if we could pull up, don't know if we have a site picture. Yeah, we go right there. Thank you. So this particular district is a 3F 4,000. You can see the, a yellow arrow shows the small structure that we're proposing to redevelop. Next to us is a large apartment-style complex over 20 units to the right. And then up and down that corridor, there are a mix of multifamily residential, three-family, and then commercial as you start to go a little further with apartment complex. The lot size that we have is 7,117 square feet. If we could go to the next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. This is just a front picture of the existing structure and then with a curb cut that already exists and the larger building to our right. And you kind of see the buildings to the left. Next slide, please. And now we get into the plans of the building. So if we go to the next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. The proposal is for the first ground level, which we're shown right here, to have seven interior parking spaces accessed by a driveway to garage door. It would have a bike room dedicated and lobby area. The second floor would start housing the units. That would be units, that would house three of the units, one bedroom at 740 square feet. We also have family-sized housing as well, which is something that the community had asked for, a three-bedroom at 1,050 and a three-bedroom at 1,258. We go up to the third floor. This houses two bi-level units that will go from the third to the fourth, and then two additional units. So we have unit, we have one two-bedroom at 966 square feet. And then we have, I'm sorry, the two other units, the lower levels. And then if we go to the fourth floor, you can see this has been pulled in, which I'll go over in a minute, but it's the middle of the building. It's been pulled in 25 feet from the front, 25 feet from the rear, and seven feet from the left-hand side based on comments we heard from neighbors. I just want to take a minute to go over the summary of changes about how we got to where we are today at this unit count and size of the building. So we started, we were at a 14-unit proposal. We've reduced that now to seven units. We've increased our left-side setback from, originally, we were at five feet. We're now at nine feet just to address concerns from the left-side neighbor. We reduced this top floor of the building, as I had mentioned, pulling it in. It's now, there's only one-fourth of the fourth floor that's left. It's been pulled in the 25 feet in the front and the back and on the left-hand side. And we also removed the roof deck because neighbors didn't want any concern of noise. We changed the colors and color scheme. We reduced the number of windows that faced the left-hand neighbor. And even from our last meeting at the BAIA, we reduced our FAR additionally from 1.38 to 1.26 and also reduced the net square footage from 8,917 to 7,017. And we were still able to have three three-bedroom units still on the site. Also, we worked with our rare neighbors to come up with a landscape plan in rebuilding the retaining wall for her. And we also were able to meet the 30-foot setback, which is required by the zoning code. With that, I can pause and answer any questions of the board.
Thank you. But just to clarify, the 14 versus the seven units, is that, was that after this was notified? Or was this just, they just, we kind of grabbed an old one? What one was this?
So, yeah, the plans have all been reviewed and stamped, all the new plans, so yes.
A second, okay. Okay, questions from the board?
Yes, I think it's a clarification from your architect. I think on the second-floor plan, I think you're missing a door to unit 203. And it's hard for me to read the square footage for each of the unit types. If you can just help me on Apple, your, what your unit, what the square footage is.
So for, yes, thank you, Ms. Barazza. So for the one-bedrooms, we are at 740 square feet roughly. For the three-bedrooms, it varies from 1,050 to 1,258. And for the two-bedroom, approximately about 1,075.
What about the duplex units?
And so the duplex units are 1,222 and I think 1,250, somewhere around there.
Okay. That sounds good. So we did receive feedback from Sierra Tilton. She's the architecture access specialist for the city of Boston and made comments on your duplex units not being accessible.
Okay.
So it's kind of violating MAAB code currently.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that recommendation. I don't know, Mike McKay, who's the architect.
Okay, but I think it can be solved because your units are pretty large. I don't have any current questions unless your architect wants to clarify.
I don't know if he's on. He was trying to get on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Let's open it, I'm sorry, Mr. Stenbridge? No, okay. Let's open it to public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Alston-Brighton liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, here to testify that the applicant did have three abutters meetings. We did receive a number of letters of opposition to the project as well. Four were from abutters. One was from an individual without address, and one was from a number of the larger Brighton community. All three abutters meetings were very well-intended with concerns including the retaining wall against the rear, setback, drainage, owner occupancy, density, and upkeep. The Brighton-Alston Improvement Association, zoning chair is on to testify as to their stance as well. And with that said, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a few raise hands. Annabella?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabella Gomes from the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. After several versions of this project and working closely with the neighbors, I do understand that there is a neighbor who is still unhappy next door. We did vote to support this project with the seven units. Thank you.
Andre?
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the floor. I am arrived at 558 Washington Street. Our building is three-family building. And we are extremely impacted, we will be, by this project because it's extremely massive from front to end and it's not meeting any of the zoning requirements. We had a lot of meeting three of them. And all what they did is, so it started as fourteen units, but all what the improvement happened is just moving walls inside that big block, but it did not shrink. There's still a massive block in front of us from the beginning. And also happened this man is still a slope, a steep slope. And they're going to, they're going to threaten that. And we are concerned that the water if there's no proper drainage, I do not have any documentation about that. We have nothing about proper drainage. And also, they're going to be building a rooftop. And also, the front, the front, the front yard and the left are very, very close, and they cannot block all our balconies. So for that part of Brighton, I searched so much to find a place like the building where I'm not too close for that specific part of Brighton, that what I purchased there. And building this is going to block everything. You go on the balcony now, you can see at least something. But this, I would mention that there was no rendering showing that that this building how it's going to show after it's built. They only show you the existing one. It's looked okay. I have attached in my file a photo from the beginning of this abutter meeting where it showed how our building is being buried, buried totally.
Ma'am, ma'am, we have your written testimony. Can you, can you just please wrap up, summarize, and state your position? Thank you.
Yes, so that's my position. So there's eight points. The building land, the building to land.
I'm sorry, ma'am. We have your written testimony. I don't want you to reread all eight of your points. Yeah, if you could speed up your testimony. Thank you.
Yeah, I am opposed, I oppose this project until we get a better improvement because it's all my point are. And also regarding the survey, like all the survey, I like, we need to find a solution for that. You have my PDA and her other point.
Thank you. We have a raise hand. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, Minor Jerez, representing the carpenters union. We'd like to vote on support of this project.
I have no additional raise hands.
Madam Chair, may I address a couple of the concerns?
Please, are we done with testimony?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are there any other raise hands? Jessica? Yeah, we are, yeah, we're all set. Can you hear me okay? Because I did. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So I think there's a little bit of confusion. When we started this project, we're over 11,000 square feet of building mass. That has significantly been reduced. We had a 16-foot setback. We have a 30-foot setback. We've completely removed the front half and rear half of the top floor of the building. So all of this, and then to address our neighbor who we heard from, we are almost compliant. 10 feet on the left-side setback would be required. We have nine feet. We also meet the front yard requirement. We're over that as well. So we did, we have all of the parking interior because we didn't want, folks are concerned about noise and sound. And we also removed the roof deck based on some of the concerns that we heard from her as well. So we really tried to accommodate all of the concerns that we heard. And I know our neighbor in the back is happy with the landscape design and the retaining wall that we're proposing. So we really did try to meet as much of the concerns that we heard. I feel we did, but we've significantly reduced this project in size and scope, but also were able to keep at least three of those family-sized units at the same time.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with two provisos. One, that the project undergoes accessibility review so that all the units satisfy MAAB core requirements. And second, that the BPDA also reviews the project so that it complements the neighboring context. the neighboring context.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, Members of the Board.
This time we'll move on to the rediscussions scheduled for 11:30 a.m. First, we have case BOA.
Deferrals or withdrawals? Deferrals or withdrawals?
In theory, thank you, Madam Chair. We will add first if there are any withdrawals or deferrals requested from this time, sir.
Yes, Attorney-
I refer to Mr. Limbs. Go ahead.
Sorry, no. Marancy, you can go before me. That's fine.
Two peon warriors. It's okay. Take your pick.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. 10 Thompson Square, Mr. Stenbridge.
So, that will be case BOA 1304433 with the address of 10 Thompson Square. Would you explain, sir?
Yes, thank you. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. This is a second extension request. The reason for the deferral, sorry, deferral request, the reason for the deferral was to allow continued community process, which we have essentially completed. We've arrived at a new set of plans that has not yet been reviewed by the BPDA. There is an old recommendation on record. I was in touch with Amy Kamers at the BPDA on January 26th. She indicated to me that the BPDA would have to review the updated set of plans. They do have to be submitted through the portal to IST. Would like to request one more extension to allow for the BPDA to re-review the project for its ZBA recommendation.
Up here?
Madam Chair, March 26 would be sufficient time, I believe.
Yes, thank you.
Attorney Marancy?
Yes, I think, I think that that works, Mr. Salas. Thank you.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer to, this case to March 26.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
And I also believe we would need from, from the attorney.
That's correct, Mr. Stenbridge. Thank you. From 169 Maverick Street. It's per building code.
Last one.
So, that will be case BOA 1475953 with the address of 169 Maverick Street. Go ahead and explain, attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Richard Blintz on behalf of petitioner. Madam Chair, this relates to a project that was approved by the board for the renovation of existing building, as well as a change of occupancy and vertical addition. The project is under construction nearing completion. During construction, a building code violation was cited. We disagreed with it. However, we have, in order to sort of preserve our place in the event that we do require it before CO, we've appealed that to this board. We are anticipating that the matter can be resolved, and we're relatively close to final inspection, and based upon that, we will probably be in a position to withdraw this request, but we would like to defer it at this time in case it's necessary in order to expedite that part of the process.
May I have a second?
Yeah, suggest April 9, just to allow inspection and any other follow-ups needed at that point.
Sounds good. I was gonna say no more March 26. All right. May I have a motion?
Motion to defer to April 9, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Returning to the rediscussions scheduled for 11:30 a.m., first, we have case BOA 1514378. The address is 3915 Washington Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present? Will they explain to the board?
Yes, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Marancy, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. With me today is the applicant Jerry Harrigan and the architect David Freed. This is a proposal to erect a new three-story, six-unit multifamily dwelling on a vacant parcel with a lot size of slightly more than 4,000 square feet. Proposal is located on Washington Street within a 3F 4,000 sub-district, a few blocks away from Forest Hills train station and a commuter rail station along Washington Street, a major multimodal corridor between JP and Rosendale, not to mention in a very close proximity to a commercial district north of this site. The erection of the six-unit dwelling is in line with the planning goals of increasing the city's housing stock specifically with rapid transient-oriented nodes of the city like this one. Further, the density is very much similar to some of the recently approved projects on this major street, one being 38 units abutting to the rare this parcel, and also this same existing project is back at the BPDA for an amendment to extend, to change it to increase the unit count to over 100 units. This building that we're proposing here at this parcel will consist of one studio and five one-bedrooms ranging from approximately 528 square feet to 710 square feet. We have violations for use as we are proposing six units in a 3F sub-district. We have a floor area ratio violation as we are proposing a 1.23. A .7 is compliant, but again, the proposed is consistent in scale and massing within the neighborhood that has been recently approved by this board. We have violation for lot frontage and width. Code requirement is 45 feet, and we are at 40 feet, which is a pre-existing non-conforming. Further, all other dimensionals are zoning compliant with this proposal. We do have a violation for parking. Again, the code requires 1.25 parking spaces per unit, and we are providing zero to be consistent with the city's goals of reducing dependency on private vehicles in a true transient location of the city. Lastly, I would like to mention that this proposal is a very good example of what the new initiative, Squares and Streets, is trying to accomplish, promoting more density near transient and along major streets within all neighborhoods of Boston. So, at this point, I am going to pause and turn it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Any questions from the board?
Can you please tell me if this is going to be affordable?
Well, there's no requirement here to the affordability as we don't meet the threshold of 10 units. We do understand that the mayor's new approach is reducing that unit count down to seven, and again, we fall outside of that scope out of the six units. So, affordability, according to the Office of Housing, this project won't be affordable, but what we consider affordable is that we will be open, as these rentals will be open to the Section 8 voucher.
Okay. And Madam Chair, can you please read the BPDA recommendation?
BPDA recommends denial without prejudice. Applicant should propose a housing development that matches the three-family scale of intermediate context. Any other questions from the board?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Can I open it up to public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. An abbuter meeting was held by our office. Our residents on it had a number of questions about just how the community process would flow, as well as questions about and some concerns regarding the size of the proposal. I know the applicant eventually went on to meet with the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council because this is within an area that falls under JP zoning. The Neighborhood Council voted to oppose this project. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time.
Mr. Newman, sorry, Mr. Newman, did the JPNC give a reasoning?
I don't have access to that letter, I'm afraid. I can try to see if I can find it.
Sorry, Jessica. Okay, yeah, ten minutes. Do you look like to give testimony here? I sent a request to review you. We'll bow our hand. I have no additional raised hands. Next.
Madam Chair, can I, can I just respond as to the BPDA recommendation that was, that was just read?
Yes.
All right, so I just, I'd just like to note take it. We did read it. We have a difference of opinion. There are many other recently approved projects that have been much denser in this neighborhood, and again, one specifically is our rarer abutting that was approved at 38 units, which is back at the BPDA for over 100 units at this point. And again, you'll keep it in mind that increasing the housing stock on a vacant parcel that we have here, we're not raising any sort of existing structures. Again, this is a vacant that we're going to increase this housing stock, providing six units, and in line with, with the, with the new initiative, the Squares and Streets. So, that's my response. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
One of the yes, and I just want to point to that this is redeveloping a vacant lot and adding six units with no parking on multiple bus lines and within half a mile of the Forest Hills transit stop, and I think it's been thoughtfully designed in terms of setbacks.
Thank you. Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have, next, we have case BOA 1473941 with the address of 820 Hyde Park Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, will they explain to the board?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. This is Attorney John Barry on behalf of the owners of this particular site. This is a particular proposal that's located within a 1F 6,000 sub-district of Hyde Park. I would like to highlight for the board, if someone could, if the person handling the screen could highlight just the section or there's a pin drop picture of this site, keep scrolling down. Keep scrolling right there. If you could just zoom in a little bit, I think that would give a little bit of context. Scroll up.
I think he needs a prior slide.
Yes, one slide above. Yes, that's fine, right there. What I'd like to just highlight for the board is that although this particular site is located in a 1F 6,000 sub-district, it does abut an MFR district, and additionally, there is a large number of very dense, much larger apartment and condominium-style buildings located right around this site. Most importantly, there's an approved project that this site actually abuts that is for 34 units and has an FAR that exceeds this particular project. As we were working through our community process and working with the BPDA on this particular proposal, that's, that's where this proposal kind of falls in line with. Working through this particular proposal, after we received the BPDA, their recommendation, we did remove one of the units, ultimately landing on an eight residential unit proposal with eight parking spots, private parking spots on the site that would be accessed by the existing curb cut. The violations that exist related to this particular proposal are, first, the lot area being insufficient. The code requires a 6,000 square foot lot. Here, we have 5,773 square feet. The lot frontage that the code would like to see is 60 feet. Here, we have 50. Those are both pre-existing non-conformances. Moving forward, there was an original proposal for nine units with an FAR of 1.5. What's actually in front of the board now is eight units with an FAR of 1.39. That was due to some design changes to remove a unit, tighten the building, move some of the parking further underneath the building, and essentially try to appease, work with the BPDA as much as possible to create as much green space on this particular site. Ultimately, the building height is 41 feet. The code would like to see 35 in this particular neighborhood, and the building in stories is four, where two and a half is what the code would recommend in this particular neighborhood. Moving forward, the front yard is 10 feet. The code would recommend 25. We have a SAR yard issue on the left side of the building at three and a half feet, where the code would recommend 10. Our rear yard being insufficient, we actually have plans that show a 42.2-foot rear yard. So, we actually contest that that's an actual violation here. All that being said, we did not scrap all of the parking on this particular site. A large issue that BPDA has is that they would like to see more green space on this site. I bring that up just to highlight to the board. This is really in what, what I would describe as a transitional edge location within a 1F 6,000 sub-district. So, it is, as you're approaching Forest Hills on Hyde Park Ave, this is getting closer to an area where I would argue that it's transit oriented, but this is still far further from that location. That said, if the BPDA was to decide during the BPDA design review process to remove the four parking spots at the rear and create, you know, a much larger green space in the rear, that's something that I think the owners would be amenable to. That said, for rentals in this particular area of Hyde Park, sometimes cars are needed. In the community was, was applauding us that we did try to ultimately reach a one-car-to-one-unit ratio. Moving through to the actual plans, largely what you have are one- and two-bedroom units here. So, unit one is a one-bedroom, one-bath at 743 square feet. That is the sole first-floor unit, in addition to the parking that's located at Green. Moving up to the second floor, there's a two-bedroom, one-bath at 798 square feet. Unit three is a one-bedroom, one-bath. That's 684 square feet. Unit four is a one-bedroom, one-bath at 507 square feet. And then, moving forward, the third and fourth floor is comprised of four bi-level units. Unit five is a one-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath. That's 860 square feet. Unit six, seven, and eight are all two bedrooms. They vary in, one, unit six is a one-and-a-half-bath. Unit seven and eight are a two-and-a-half-bath. Those are the three bigger units that are two bedrooms, and they range from 951 square feet to 1,075 square feet. There was a comment by the BPDA that they were concerned about trees being removed. We actually met with them and discussed that. There's actually only one tree that would be located along the driveway where you would access the parking in the rear of the site. We are happy to, and as the owners are aware, and I'm aware, of the city's rules with any trees that are being removed, we are happy to meet any of the city's guidelines, as well as this is an ERT building, so an ERT permit request, so that would require shade trees being installed as well. We do think that this is in line with what is being proposed and what currently sits in this particular area, and we do think that this will help as far as this particular corner being developed. And the site, I would just like to highlight, the site is blighted. The single thing that's on it is dilapidated. This is a much-needed upgrade in adding housing, which this board is aware of. That's in line with the, so this is actually the picture, the chart I wanted to just highlight for the board, which is there are 34 units that are currently permitted right abutting the site. Behind the site is 40 units on the corner of American Legion and Hyde Park Ave. There's 78. Corner of Claire Ave and American Legion is a big commercial building, and in large part, a lot of the four- to six-unit buildings or six-unit double-triple deckers exceed the bedroom counts for this particular project. This particular project ultimately lands at 12 bedrooms in those eight units. Our goal here was to offer as many one-bedroom, small unit rental opportunities for families in Hyde Park as well as the larger two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath opportunities as well, so to offer a variety of household incomes, opportunities to stay and live in a nice unit in Hyde Park. With that, I'm gonna pause and see if there's any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you. The slide is helpful. I was gonna ask you about the neighboring number of units. Are there other questions from the board?
The project that you said is currently undergoing construction, the 34, 34 unit, do you have photos of that?
I do not. So, what I can say, Ms. Bede Barazza, is that White Acre is the owner of that particular project. I actually live several blocks from this neighborhood. It appeared that they were beginning to clear the site roughly six months ago and fenced it off. I do not have current pictures of their existing site, other than it is, it's a raised site that's fenced off right now, but I do not see that they're actually building the current foundation. But I do know that it's permitted and that it is, it appears that the construction is set to begin.
Okay, because, you know, it is, you're, the, you know, the site is a transitional kind of block, and, and, you know, the topology is really two, two to three stories max if you take into consideration the buildings right across it. So, I just wanted to get a sense of, you know, what was being proposed next to it.
I could definitely touch on that. I apologize for coming to the-
The denser, the corners tend to, you know, kind of work with the buildings adjacent to it, but your site is a in-between kind of condition, so I'm just making some observations.
It is. What I can say from pulling the decision on that particular project is that it is four stories at the corner. I believe the height of that particular site, the height of that corner of the building is 45 feet. That is why we felt like at 41, we would be stepping down from there and then moving further towards ultimately what is the 35 feet that is recommended in this neighborhood. That said, I do think the BPDA's recommendation does highlight that the zoning in this area does need to be changed or amended in order to meet what is currently, and currently is situated in this particular neighborhood.
Okay, great. And we don't have Jeff Hampton on, do we, Madam Chair?
I don't know. Are you on, Mr. Hampton?
I've been on all morning, Madam Chair.
And we've done great without you.
That sounds, that sounds great. I mean, I like, I like to, Jeff, I like to get your feedback on, you know, the BPDA recommended denial without prejudice, and I would like to know, you know, there's a project that's been approved next to it that's 34 units, much denser. Do you have any feedback? Having the same kind of zoning, do you have any feedback? You know, originally was, the one that is proposed, 34, was on 1F 6,000. Can you give us insight- Can you give us insight in terms of what the BPDA is thinking about in terms of the law at 820 being in-between kind of condition?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Barazza. Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton. It is four feet lower, but in our minds for it to be transitional when that, I forget, what is the 34, 806, I think it is, at the corner? You know, we'd like to have it stepped down even further, going from the corner with 34 units, going back into that one-family zoning district. We'd like to have it stepped down, and that's why in our recommendation, you know, we're really looking at a building that is smaller in scale, you know, in terms of lot coverage and the building height, have more open space. 806 did go through Article 80 review, so that had a pretty consistent design phase going on through it. But with this particular case, we're not so much opposed to the number of units, but it's the stepping down and the massing of the building that we're very interested in to have it reduced a little bit. Then, of course, we always have the open space concerns.
Yes, that's really helpful. Thank you so much, Jeff, for commenting.
Could I ask also, Mr. Hampton, so, because surrounding him is also the 40 unit, and across the street, I can't see the number anymore, but it was 30 and something, 60 or something, 70 something.
70.
Are those also, what heights are those, do you know, over stories?
Actually, I don't know when those were built, so.
Okay, okay. Do you know, Mr. Barry?
I'd have to do some more research on that.
They range between 45 and 50 feet.
Okay, so everything sort of surrounding it to the one side is at least four feet or more higher? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. It's time the Mayor's Office had to defer to the judgment of this board. ONS hosted an abutters meeting for this proposal on October 31st of 2023. It was not well-attended. I understand that the applicant went on to connect with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association in September, but they were informed that the project fell within the boundaries of the Mount Hope Can't-Bury Neighborhood Association, and as a result, reached out to them and were in contact. Due to personnel changes, I don't have any more information beyond that. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I have more additional raised hands. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I could just respond to that, we did meet with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association and made a full presentation regarding this particular project in August. I also, I'm not trying to spar with Mr. Hampton, I usually take his guidance. I think their recommendation was prior to the design changes that were made on this particular project, as far as trying to make the building smaller in every way possible. I think really what you're running into is, there's the need for the housing, there's a, the site is kind of a long rectangular shape, so in order to make the parking work, this is what we landed at. Now, the number of units is what it is. We think that this is in line with what is in the current area, and it does add much-needed housing that the city needs.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put a motion forward. I would like to put a motion of approval with a proviso that BPDA provides feedback on the overall massing, so that the fourth floor is set back and distinguishes from the first three floors. And that BPDA also reviews the coverage as it deals with open, open space to that of parking, and provides the applicant feedback on the amount of parking that is doable to allow for open space.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stanbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencio?
Yes.
Ms. Uro?
I'm actually going to vote no. Something that's troubling me about the site design is just the amount of paving versus the building footprint and the lack of open space. So, you know, if we were getting additional units in lieu of lack of open space or maintaining the open space, maybe that's something I would be supportive of, but the site design just reads very auto-centric. It's on four bus lines, and I'd rather just see a different site plan from the applicant than kicking it to designer view to fix, sort of the self-imposed problem.
Thank you, Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langman?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Taking over the next item on the agenda, I'm going to case BOA 1448246 with the address of 24 Common Street. If the applicant and or their representative present, would they explain the case to the board?
Hi, just, I just made Scott a panelist, so Scott, when you become a panelist, you can unmute yourself. Hi, can you hear us? Other raised hands too, I sent a request to mute both of us, and Kim, I can hear it?
Hi, hello. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry for the slight delay there. Thank you to the board, you know, just a quick summary of this project again. We're proposing a curb cut behind our property at 24 Common Street. The curb cut would be on Elwood Street, which is a dead-end street with no on-street parking. You know, hence this would add an additional, you know, parking spot to Charleston against kind of a backdrop in which, you know, the immediate neighborhood has lost five spots over the past year, so parking is very tight on the street. The secondary motivation for the parking spot would be to provide access to an electric vehicle charging station, and ultimately the purchase of an electric vehicle, you know, in line with the city initiatives. You know, this has been approved by the, by the pick, but come to this, you know, group, I think because of issues raised by an abutter. The primary issue raised by the abutter is that the headlights potentially from a car coming down the street would shine into the windows across the street. So what we've tried to include for the board is an additional picture that shows how a car would come down Elwood Street and then enter the parking spot, and then back out of the parking spot, and then come back down Elwood Street. And in that scenario, we don't believe there's any headlights that would flash on the, a abutter that is directly across, that has raised the issue. So we hope that that addresses that concern related to the headlights potentially shining through the windows. We believe there's, you know, some precedents here. There is another curb cut in driveway at 20 Common Street, you know, that's been in place for a while, and no issues, you know, associated with that spot and parking. We provided, you know, some additional pictures again for the board, just so you could see a little bit more of the existing one at 20 Common, the proposed one that we have at 24 Common, to hopefully provide some more detail there. So I'll stop there, and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I think community process was part of why we've deferred this several times. Can you speak to, I know we'll hear from people anyway, but can you speak to that?
We've reached out to the, you know, the person primarily opposed to this project, and we're not able to kind of reach agreement. Again, I think that the two issues, the issue, the primary issue raised was related to headlights, and then I hopefully have addressed that. I think there was a secondary issue raised at the initial hearing related to safety on the street. You know, the street is serviced by the City of Boston like any other street, so we don't believe there's any outsized risk related to the street.
Okay. And I was, I believe your wife submitted several photos. Can you, can you just add context to it, because she didn't elaborate on the significance of the photos?
Sure, would it be possible to scroll down?
We can't, I mean, we can't pull it up unless it's already in here, but she emailed photos that I, I would like, I would like to understand the, I'm sorry?
Would you like me to share those photos?
We cannot share screen, but I just want to, if you can, for those who don't have the benefit of seeing it, if you could just explain, like, I mean, was it to highlight exactly what you just said, the, you know, screening of the lights, or what is it, what was the significance?
That's correct, so there's, there's one image that highlights with yellow arrows how a car would pull down Elwood Street and pull into the proposed parking spot, such that the lights would never hit, the headlights would never hit the, you know, the abutter across the street that has raised the issue around headlights. And then there are additional photos that just highlight the existing curb cut parking spot at 20 Common Street and what that looks like, as well as other pictures of the street, such that to provide context around appropriate access and safety of that street.
Okay, the photo that she sent with the red car, that's the neighbor that you're referring to?
That is correct, yes.
Because that, that feels like front yard parking, but in the rear or something like that, so I'm assuming you've talked about screening and buffering your potential spot, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, other questions from the board?
Where do you, where do you currently park?
We try to park on-street. It's been, as I mentioned, it's been a little bit more challenging, and the spots have been reduced, and our kids are involved in activities, and they come back a little bit later at night, so it's just been challenging to find spots later in the evening.
Okay, so you're parking on Elwood Street?
No, there's no on-street parking on Elwood Street currently.
Okay, so you just park around the neighborhood?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great, and if we can also read Bob Dimico's comment for the project, that would be great, for the record.
I don't have that, I don't know, Mr. Stanbridge does? I don't have it in front of me, I mean, sorry.
Can you keep from the lines?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Stanbridge.
From Mr. Dimico, there is parking on this side of the street. PTD does not support a one-space request when there is parking on the side of the street where the curb is requested cut, where the curb cut is requested. It results in a private parking space.
But this is, this is why I ask, and the applicant just mentioned that there is no parking allowed on the street. So which one is it?
That's correct.
If Bob did, okay.
There is no parking allowed on Elwood Street, there is no street parking.
Okay, so Bob, are you online? Would that change your recommendation?
Yes, I apologize, I was looking at Elwood Street rather than, I'm sorry, I apologize, Common Street, rather than the street where the parking space is being proposed. So it's still kind of a tight squeeze, but since it's not taking any parking away from the community, I'll leave it up to the discretion of the board, but I still think it's kind of tight, because it's going right up to the back of the house, and like I said, I'll leave it up to the discretion of the board.
Okay, thank you, Bob. So one of the other issues I think that came up previously from abutters was concerns around fire access. Has that been resolved by anyone? I don't know if any, you know, anyone's waiting with Boston Fire Department, because we obviously don't know.
Not that we're aware of, but I think that the same issue would exist for the pre-existing driveway and curb cut.
I'm sorry, the same would exist with what?
We have not, this is the first time I've heard about checking in with the Boston
This has come up, this has come up in all your hearings. Your neighbors have expressed concerns about fire access.
Okay.
That's come up.
Okay. We have not checked in with, with the Boston Fire Department on this. We would assume that that issue would exist with the existing driveway and curb cut.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, let's have a public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Breen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting was held at 24 Common Street on June 13th, 2023. Since that time, this office has received four letters in support and eight in opposition with safety and privacy concerns for Elwood Street residents. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Mr. Breen, are those letters of support from Elwood Street?
I'd have to go back and look at all of them. They are abutters, though. I'm not, I don't know if there's, does that, I know there's at least a few from Common Street. I did not see any from Elwood Street, but I can look through them again.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, this is Melissa Brennan, I didn't want to speak if there was any other public officials' offices that are going to speak?
Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. So I don't want to keep beating a dead horse here, but I just want to reiterate that it's setting a precedent. They keep talking about number 20 Common Street, 20 Common Street has been in there for at least 30 years and has a front yard, it's completely different. This could set a precedent for the house next door, as well as the end of Elwood Street, where multiple parking spots could go. Secondly, it's a dead end off a dead end, so normal plows do not make the turn. We have a small plow that comes up the street, so the street is often icy and dangerous during the winter because of the shadow cast by Elwood Street. It's not one abutter that's opposed to this, multiple people that live at 11 Elwood Street, which is the house that is directly across from this, have spoken out against this. Number five spoke in favor, and number five, Elwood Street, is nowhere near where this parking spot could go. And then I just have two questions for the board. You know, the guy just said this is a really tight squeeze, and they've kind of made allusions to how the lights will not affect it, but what is the enforcement provision if this gets approved, that the flat, that the headlights actually do go into the house and are affecting privacy? I feel like there's no recourse for getting this undone once it's in. And secondly, Plan Charleston, which has passed, is against curb cuts. And Article 62, which this is in violation of, has a community participation section, and it says that the community and residents should play an ongoing role in advising the city on land use planning for Charleston. You have residents here asking you for the third time not to approve this, so why is the community voices here being silenced? And why is this continuing to be deferred when it's really, there's going to be a parking spot or there's not, there's just no compromise? So I would really like to, somebody to address why the public comments are kind of being ignored. Last time, we also had three city councils opposed, City Council Michael Flaherty is no longer in office, but Gabriella Coletta and Erin Murphy's office also spoke in opposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do have, I'm sorry, this is Sean Breen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I do have one letter of support from Elwood, from five Elwood.
Okay, which Ms. Brennan mentioned, thank you. Thanks, Mary? Yep, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mary Marshall, I'm an abutter to the Perrys. I too have three children, and it's very difficult to find parking, so I'm in full support of taking a car off the street. The parking in Charleston has only gotten increasingly difficult in the years that I've lived here. I've lived in Charleston since 2009, always in this area, and this actual past year is one of the most difficult times that I've ever had trying to find street parking, especially with my children during after-school activities and evening activities. I fully support having a electric charging vehicle station, and just reducing the parking would be a really great thing for our neighborhood. I'm not concerned with the look of it, and I really hope that this can get approved and help us in Charleston with the Plan Charleston going through. I just think that the parking is going to get even more difficult.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, my name is Kim Osborne, I also live in that neighborhood, right around the corner on Chestnut Street. So a couple of things, one is, I know safety was brought up a few times, I have four children of my own that play out there, I've never once thought that that would be an issue for them, so I really think that safety is kind of not an issue for that space at all, there are no cars parked right now, it's just not an issue. The curb cut itself, I think Mary mentioned the appearance of that, I don't think it's anything that the neighbors are thinking of right now. Headlights, as Scott had mentioned, are not going into that window, that was also a concern. Obviously, getting an electric vehicle would help not just our community, but the environment in general, so I, as a neighbor, I'm 100% in approval. The Perrys are out at night helping the community, that's what they're doing, they're coaching a lot of the activities that are going on in our community, they're coming back late, and there's no parking to be found. We're kind of in the same situation, having four kids of our own. Taking one far off the street would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and let's see, we got to help this, yeah. Lauren, are you looking to get testimony here?
Yes.
Go ahead. Can you state your name and address and briefly? I'm sorry, with the applicant?
No, my name is Lauren. I live at five Elwood Street.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm in favor of having this curb cut. I live right on the corner of Putnam and Elwood, which is where a car would turn. And the light from a car is not an issue, and this is certainly a safe street. And I don't think that, you know, any lights will be an issue. And that, you know, over the years, I've lived in Charlestown for almost ten years now, and it seems that every year more and more parking spots from the street get, get removed, particularly right on Common Street, right near their house and corner of Putnam and Common. They've removed more and more parking over the years. So it really, parking really is an issue, and if we can take one car off the street, then that would be a great help.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? We have a guest, a caller six one seven five four. He sent a request to unmute. You could press star three to unmute. Okay, there you go. You looking to get testimony here?
Hi, my name is Mary Dougherty, and I live at eleven Elwood Street, directly across from this property. And I just have a couple of comments to make. The lights won't affect anybody as much as they will affect the occupants of eleven Elwood Street, specifically on the first floor, lower level, because it would be directly across from this. It's really not going to impact anybody else on the street. And the second thing is, as much as I sympathize with the parking situation, I can't help but to wonder why an individual would buy a house in Charlestown without parking, knowing the situation here and understanding the situation, yet buy a property and then try to change it after the fact? Would it make more sense to buy property with parking than without parking and try to make changes, you know, later down the road? So I just can't help but to wonder, you know, why people aren't thinking like that in advance. And I do sympathize with the situation, but that's the reality of it. If you buy it without parking, you have to park it. That's the way it is.
Thank you. Can I just want to speak on this, the two, if you know what it stands? Let's stop at those two then. I think we've. Perfect. Emery?
So I also live at eleven Elwood Street on the first floor, and I'm not sure how anybody could say that, you know, the lights would not be a problem. My bedroom is right outside that gate, so the headlights at some point, you know, would be shining into that bedroom, whether it's, you know, turning into the yard or coming out of, you know, pulling out of the space. So at some point, unless you don't turn your headlights on, you know, but, you know, if somebody's coming in when it's dark out, you're going to need your headlights. And the other issue, anybody that lives on Elwood Street, you know, knows when it snows out or, you know, it's really cold out and there's ice on Elwood Street. You know, the street is really icy. So, you know, one ice storm, a car could very well, you know, not make that turn and unfortunately end up right inside, you know, my bedroom. We've seen it many times, you know, when vehicles, you know, have mishaps on ice. And as far as the safe street, yes, it is a very safe street because it's very limited to how many cars come up the street because the only cars that come up the street are the people that park in, you know, twenty Common Streets. So there is very limited cars on the street, and that's why it is such a safe street. So I would like, you know, everybody to take that into consideration. You know, the old lady that lives on the first floor in eleven Elwood Street. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Last caller, I mean last, last person. Yep, Kathleen.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Lacy. I also live at eleven Elwood Street, and I just want to voice my opposition. I don't really have anything different to say than Melissa, Mary, and Emery. I live in the lower level as well, so the headlights would definitely affect the basement level and the first floor ground level when entering and exiting the, you know, the requested parking spot. So I just want to oppose that as well, just to be on the record for that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? I don't have any questions. Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, could I just respond briefly to a couple of the comments?
Briefly?
Yes. So as Attorney Brennan raised, she had reached out to the counselors. The counselors came on the last call and provided some opposition to the project. We've reached out to all of the counselors. They've all said they either defer to the board or are supportive of the project, so I just wanted to clarify that. I'm in regard to buying a property without parking. We bought the property over ten years ago. We had one kid at the time. We now have three kids. We didn't necessarily anticipate the need for parking or the changes in the neighborhood.
Thank you. As to the counselors, et cetera, so I mean, if they're not speaking for themselves and we don't have any documentation, I just want to be clear, we can't go by that. But with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to put forward a motion of denial. I'm looking at just the potential impact that can occur on those living on Elwood Street in terms of their frontage. It would become a precedent because I see other rear lots that can potentially also come in front of us for a new curb cut and impact the neighbors. It is a very, very narrow lot, so this is the reason that I'm putting forward that motion.
Thank you. May I have a motion? I'm sorry, may I have a second? Thank you.
I can.
Second.
Mr. Stanbridge?
No.
Mr. Valencia?
I'm going to vote no.
Ms. Wuwol?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Okay, with that, I think we have a mandatory break until one. Is that right?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'll see everyone at one.